Take your seats, please. Our Kansas City Council calling this meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. How are you all doing today?
Good. How are you?
Doing great. Ready to rock and roll. Madam Clerk, can you begin, please?
And the invocation?
We're doing it. Do we have any special intentions? Councilman Wilmot?
I have a dear friend, his name is Patrick Williams. We served together in the state legislature for many years. And he's, he has a serious cancer and he's going to go into treatment right now for the next six months. So please keep him and his family in your prayers. Thank you.
Passed away, so the funeral services are today. That's why he's unable to attend.
Okay. We'll keep him in our prayers. Anyone else? At this time, I'd like to call the pastor of my church, St. Anne Church, Father Billy Arroden to the, to the, to the stand to give the opening prayer today. Father Billy, thank you for being here.
As we honor the flag of the United States of America, and before God we stand, who is Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, and before whom we shall give an account of ourselves, we take this time to pray. We begin by asking God's blessing upon Mayor Mike Glazer, the councilmen and women, especially Joella Lahatt, as he presides over this meeting today. We pray for the guidance and courage for those who are in positions of authority in the city of Kenner, in the state of Louisiana, and in our nation. We ask for the blessings of good and worthy decisions and for a greater wisdom and understanding for all people. We pray for the council members and for the vision and insight to prepare strategic plans that will not only affect the future, but all people going forward. Help us, Lord, to plan for the future and help us to understand that the best way to predict the future is to be part of it through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Father Billy, thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to ask Mayor Brian Brennan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Councilmember Brennan will serve as the acting mayor for this meeting. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Good morning. Just a brief comment on behalf of the mayor's office. As you may be aware, if you drove this way, the railroad tracks at Williams have been temporarily repaired, as well as Hanson, and the anticipation of their full repairs expected to be done within three months. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request from Councilwoman Dunn to amend the agenda to add an Item 3C, which is an application number 2345-23, Excel Star Incorporated, to hold a public gathering on August 12, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of a back-to-school event at Susan Park Gymnasium at 502 Veterans Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to the council amending the agenda? Please come forward now. Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Under the consent agenda, I have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of July 6, 2023. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on October 22, 2023, at Lake Town Parking Lot, 5050 Williams Boulevard, being property owned by the City of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2344-23, Murphy Education and Sports Foundation to hold a public gathering on July 22, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. for the purpose of a community engagement at Musburger Lino Gym in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 2346-23, the City of Kenner to hold a public gathering on October 22, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of a food truck festival at Lake Town Parking Lot at 5050 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3C is application number 2345-23, Excel Star Incorporated to hold a public gathering on August 12, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of a back-to-school event at Susan Park Gymnasium at 502 Veterans Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 8, public hearings and final passage. We have none. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,317, and ordinance amending Chapter 15, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 2, Section 15-18 of the Kenner City Code of Ordinances.
It's a motion by Councilmember Schwarth, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no discussion. Councilmembers in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution ratifying the reappointment of Dr. Barbara Sonia to the City of Kenner Fire and Police Civil Service Board for the term which ends July 30, 2026.
It's a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. Any discussion? Seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 13B is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Fire Inspector Jared Heidel as Kenner Fire Department Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board Representative for the term that ends on July 30, 2025.
It's a motion by Councilmember Sharwa, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 13C is a resolution appointing Eric M. Rotz to the City of Kenner Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Motion by Councilmember Lahatt, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,313, and ordinance authorizing the purchase of software and equipment from Telview Corporation, a sole-source provider, in an amount not to exceed $21,901.
It's a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Any discussion on this item number? Seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,314, and ordinance approving renewal number 1 to the agreement with Jay Chen's Plumbing Repairs LLC for plumbing services, labor only, extending the agreement one year and increasing the agreement amount by $100,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $200,000 for the Department of General Services.
A motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to... Excuse me, not cough. I just wanted to clarify, how much, when does this contract end? And how much has been expended year-to-date?
Liza's got the figures. I don't have the figures on me, so maybe she can answer that number for you.
Yeah, the expenditure to date is about $20,000.
Okay, thank you. And so what's, is there a particular repair that this is related to?
Yes, yes. We have a major undertaking over at the City Hall Campus on 1801 Williams. There's been broken pipes underneath the slab in the parking lot between all three buildings and the fire department for many years now. We've been piecing it back together over the years. We don't know for sure if we're going to do the repair or not, but I wanted to raise the cap just in case in the next fiscal year we do have to get this addressed and done. I wanted to make sure we had enough money in the cap to cover that repair if need be. But because of, you know, what's going to happen with building A and B, we're still holding off on doing anything right now.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Councilmember Schwarth.
Mark, when you start the project, are you going to let us know?
Sure, sure. We'll let you know.
You know, because if we're going to tear the buildings down, how much do we really have to do for the fire department?
We won't know the extent of it until we, we're going to have to break up the concrete between building B and building A to get to it. There's a major break underneath the driveway to slab there. So we won't know until we, we start the project, but, but we'll let you know ahead of time before we get started.
And what, is it wastewater?
It's just, it's plumbing. It's drainage. It's everything underneath there. It's sagging, breaking. We put cameras in it.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Wilmot?
Mr. Glorioso, considering that these buildings that it surrounds apparently are, are functions with, we have buildings A, B, and C, those buildings, a couple of them, we understand that are dis-repaired to the point that they may have to be demolished. That being the case, how is that going to impact this project? Are we going to have, it's going to be, I'm sure that that'll be figured or calculated into the repairs, correct?
The major problem we have right now is really building C, that we have plumbing issues where it backs up in that building. That's where the main issue is, so again, we won't know until we, we get to that point what's going to be affected from coming down with building A and building B. But we have, like I said, this is just in place in case we do do the job. We don't know to the extent how bad the damage is until we really get into it.
We're going to be mindful of buildings A and B with the concerns.
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,315, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from S&amp;R Louisiana LLC doing business as Precision Door Service to furnish and install one overhead steel door at Fire Station 38, 325 Duke Street, Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with letter bid 23-2081 in the amount of $12,894.88 for the Department of General Services.
It's a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember Ronnie Schwarth.
Do you go with it, the size and everything else? Got you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ronnie. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,316, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Veterans Construction LLC to furnish and install flooring at the Council on Aging Building at 641 Cobram Street, Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with sealed bid 23-6778 in the amount of $44,460 for the Department of General Services.
A motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,318, and ordinance authorizing the utilization of Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office Contract/Bid Number 23-May-1701 with Lamarck Ford Incorporated and Courtesy Ford to purchase vehicles on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 for the life of the agreements.
A motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt. Any discussions on this? Councilmember Schwarth.
Your budget, or is it coming out of the general fund and how's it on the vehicles?
Well, it's actually both. So what this is, this is going to encompass all the city departments from the administration as well as the police department. We usually go out on our own, but this year we did it with the city because, you know, we need vehicles and the city does as well. So we're doing it together.
Seeing some of the paperwork, I'd see some discrepancies on dates from JPSO. It's that contract was from '22 to '23, but just an addendum that's on there, just one little line. It says that open a bid we're going to be reopened up for this year.
I can answer that question. There's a letter of extension that's also attached to the document, so it extends for an additional year.
So to answer your question, what I get for the police department is going to come out of my budget and what the city departments get for the city departments will come out of their budget.
Cool, thank you.
Councilmember Brannigan?
Ms. Erin, have we spent any of this money so far? Or where, because I know we, we, we had some new vehicles purchased. Was that in last year?
Yeah, that was last year. So this is something new. We do have an immediate need and Chantel can, if she wants to, if not...
I can chime in on that. So the way that this actually started was we have been looking for a stakebody truck for the food bank to be able to pick up deliveries and get food to the food bank for some time. General Services has been loaning their vehicle to the food bank when they can, and the food bank actually has the funds to purchase a new truck. We just couldn't get one. They had one, they had a recall on it, and so it's been out of operation for some time. When the police chief knew that we were taking part in this contract, had received approval, this was one of the few contracts that actually had this truck on their contract, he asked if he could jump one, which is why the dollar amount was raised.
Okay.
So we haven't purchased anything off of this contract yet.
Okay.
Correct. It's just a final cap, and it is for use citywide.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nune.
Anybody else? Thank you for the explanation. That was great. Seeing no further discussion. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,319, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Superior Traffic Control LLC to provide guardrail maintenance in accordance with sealed bid number 236779 in the amount not to exceed $75,000 annually for the Department of Field Services.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Schwarth. Any discussion? Councilmember Wilmot?
Can I get an explanation on this one?
It's a maintenance contract for guardrail repair or guardrail installation. We have a number of guardrails throughout the city, especially by bridges. It's a two-year contract. You know, it's the same load bidder that we have now. It's the same load bidder that we had in the past. So it's just a maintenance-type contract that allows to install guardrails as well.
Okay, we have certain guardrails that we're focused on?
Not specifically.
Okay, this is just general?
Yeah, just, just a maintenance contract, something that we can have if we have a problem with guardrails. And from time to time, we do have problems with guardrails.
I'm sure we do. I just wanted to see if we had anything we're focused on. Is there any, anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I'd like to add is that when these guardrails, we repair damage through a traffic accident, the amount that we repair goes to legal so they can try and, you know, get back from the accident, you know, what we cost us to repair them. So it is a process that also that we try and get reimbursement if we can.
Thank you all. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Brannigan?
How much have we spent last year using this contract?
We spent on the guardrail $28,546.
Do you feel $75,000 is good enough?
We have gone up, you know. I mean, you know, previous years, the previous contract had a cap of $30,000. We want to go up to $75,000. We're going to be entering hurricane season. That's not to say we're going to spend $75,000. It's going to be on an as-needed basis. The last time we used that contract probably was along Jenny Boulevard in the vicinity of Lakefront. I think the guardrail was impacted out there. But yeah, we do have guardrails throughout the city, and as need be, we're going to replace it or we're going to repair it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance approving the sale of a 60-by-150 portion of unapproved Seventh Street right-of-way between Square 59 and 74, Old Kenner subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, which property is owned by the City of Kenner, Case P-19-23. Item 16B is an ordinance amending the City of Kenner's Code of Ordinances, Appendix A- Unified Development Code, specifically side and rear setback requirements for development in a light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts, Article 6, Zoning, Section 6.11A and B, to allow no required side or rear yard setbacks except where lots abut and residential zoning district, Case C-2-23. Item 16C has been removed. Item 16D is an ordinance amending the capital budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 according to ordinance number 12,241. Item 16E is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 12,227 and accepting the lowest responsive bid received from B&amp;J Enterprises of Metairie Incorporated to furnish and install roofing at Musburger Lino Concession Stand in accordance with letter bid number 23-2055 and in the amount of $22,200 for the Department of General Services. Item 16F is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 12,288 and accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Build Contracting Services Incorporated to furnish and install roofing for the fire headquarters in accordance with letter bid number 23-2054 in the amount of $21,859.20 for the Department of General Services. Item 16G is an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Hartman Engineering Incorporated dated January 25, 2022 for Roosevelt Boulevard improvements, West Metairie Avenue to West Napoleon Avenue, State Project Number H Period 015120, Federal Project Number H 015120, City of Kenner Project Number 2021-2-RB, adjusting the amounts of basic and supplementary services for the Department of Public Works. Item 16H is an ordinance approving the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with NOLA Sports Center for the use of Lincoln Manor Playground. Item 16I is an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the Ashbrook Belt Press Drive Roller by GSM Engineered Fabrics LLC in the amount of $17,707 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16J is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of bar screen number 2 at the treatment plant of Cooster's Water in the amount of $19,414 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16K is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number 3 at 35th and Ole Miss Lift Station by Precision PSI LLC in the amount of $35,773.42 for the Department of Wastewater. Precision PSI LLC in the amount of $29,751 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16M is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of State Contract Number 40000 Industries Incorporated doing business as Howard Technology Solution to purchase computer equipment on an as-needed basis in the amount not to exceed $50,000 annually for the Department of Information Technology. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to thank the wastewater department and the administration for giving some of the council members tours yesterday. It was very eye-opening, and I thank you for your time. It was the most disgusting tour I've ever had in my entire life, but, and I, but it also made me realize that how important it is because I don't want to have to, you know, interact with any of that stuff that they interact with on a daily basis. So I know that, you know, most people don't think about the great invention of indoor plumbing and, and how lucky we are to have that, but I gained a new appreciation yesterday, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Brannigan?
In District 4 this week, we put up these barricades in front of Walgreens on West S-1A. There's two turning lanes. One is a U-turn lane, one is a turning lane in the same turning lane that goes into the parking lot by Five Guys and Walgreens. And I have to say, within 25 hours, we had black tire marks all over these white barricades that are up. It's just unbelievable how bad the drivers are in our area. So please be aware of those barricades. The problem that was reported to me were people in the left lane were going to the turning lane and trying to bypass everybody in the turning lane and cut in front of them, and there was almost several accidents. So that's why I had those installed, and I want to thank our General Services guru, Mr. Glorioso, for getting that done for me.
Anyone else? I wanted to say I was out in Lake Town last Saturday night around 10:30, and there are a lot more lights out there now. It's a lot better looking. There were families out there playing in the playground. And that's from a quest I made about a month before then because we needed to illuminate it more for safety purposes. And whoever did that, Mark Glorioso, Charles Alon, very well done, very, very well done. It was a lot better. I could sense a better sense of safety, and I appreciate the chief always having a stationed officer out there, which we're going to continue doing for the public, but just wanted to put that out there. I really noticed it. I wanted to say thanks. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Dunn, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I also want to thank the recreational department for going out and doing back-of-the-track at Bessie Hammond. I went out there that Friday before the event, and they really did an awesome job of cleaning that park up. So I really want to thank the administration and Mr. Gil Yard and those that went out there to do such an awesome job on that park.
Madam Clerk?
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Okay, if everybody comes up, you have three minutes. Good morning, Mr. Al. Good seeing you today.
How you doing, buddy? Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 51 years. I want to start off by addressing these scumbags who crawl up out that sewer they call New York City to come down here and undermine our police department. And now I'm getting reports they've been harassing our employees with some vulgar... And now I'm getting reports they've been harassing our employees with some vulgarities as well. So let me tell you people what we do down here. We prosecute criminals down here and reward good Samaritan heroes. Unlike that sewer you crawled up under, Autumn, where you prosecute good Samaritan heroes and reward the criminals. Two weeks ago, this demented fool you call the mayor of that sewer, while he's giving a press conference promoting in a curriculum in the schools to teach children how to breathe, they got a psycho riding around on a scooter, shooting innocent people at random in your streets. One of them, an eighty-five-year-old man that was killed. Where's their rights? Where are the rights of the victim? Tell me where they are. Then you're going to post your garbage on social media on Memorial Day. I don't suspect you scumbags know what Memorial Day is, so let me tell you what it is. It's a day we honor our military men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice. And by the way, they're the true defendants of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Not you all. All y'all are a bunch of scumbag political hats. I told you that if you cross my path, I was going to unload on you. And you just find out I'm a man of my word. But I got one more thing you should know about me. The more adversity that comes my way, the more vulgarated I become. If you want some more, I got a whole lot more for you. This is for the people of Kenner, for our police department, and for our employees. How much time I got, Lieutenant LaHat?
Forty-five seconds, and I want to remind you, you're not allowed to use things like certain words. You haven't used a curse word, but there's some decorum rules. And I know you're fired up, and I know why you're fired up. Just a reminder of that. Not too bad, but.
I want to say this to you, Constable LaHat.
Sure.
It's mild compared to what I heard they were calling on the telephone telling our employees. So that don't even come into play here, Constable LaHat. I respect you trying to say this because you compelled to, but this is mild compared to what they've done. And I'm going to continue to call them what they are as long as they want to cross my path. Now, forty-five seconds left. Plenty of time.
No, you have fifteen seconds.
That's okay. That's plenty of time. I want to direct this to Liz. I've been seeing a lot of our employees working out in his heat with no water on no trucks. And I'm getting reports now that they happen to buy their own bottled water. I see y'all got bottled water sitting over there.
Mr. Morella, your time is up. I'll let, if Liz wants to answer your question right now or after the meeting she can.
How much money's been allocated to buy water for our employees?
Okay, your time is up. I do appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Next, we have Evelyn Freeman Evans. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just as a point of information, I've had conversations with several council members and I was unable to get it finished for this meeting, but we have spoken about council members putting up money strictly for that reason, to go buy Gatorades and to go buy water to distribute as we're driving around, which I know a few of us have done and continue to do. So our intention, and again, hopefully we can get this done next week since it's Friday, is to secure just a good amount of both Gatorade waters and some other drinks and be able to distribute those to Mr. Glorioso and some of the other department heads so that they can distribute those to their employees. So we all do appreciate what our workers are doing. We all understand how warm and hot it is out there. But we are actively trying to do that for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brennan. Next to the podium, we have Ms. Evelyn Freeman Evans. You have three minutes, okay?
Good morning. I just want to thank the mayor for entering into the contract with the Romelli Company. I have driven around District One, excuse me. I do see some improvements. I pulled the list from the council meeting on last month of the areas. I also emailed our councilwoman Dee Dunn, Ms. McKenney, and Mr. Wilmot. There are about eleven more ditches in District One that need attention. We are asking that you incorporate what I sent to you into the list that you all compiled for last month's meeting. Okay, with that said, I drove down Kenner Avenue. There are still trees that are growing next to the railroad tracks. And my question to the council is, since Romelli has cut and sprayed what they could, whose responsibility is that to cut those trees? It's still horrible looking. If it's the railroad's responsibility, I'm asking all of you to contact the railroad, ask them to also to do their job in cleaning up the areas that are still lingering with actual trees that are growing, some areas next to grass, some areas are next to rocks. So with that said, I am imploring all of you to take an active part in getting District One cleaned up. The ditches are still, they've been sprayed and they're yellow now, but there's still a lot of work to do. Councilwoman Dunn, I would like to invite you or any other council member to ride along with me, or we have a group of OKCA members that we ride every week. We look at everything in District One that is not being attended to. So with that said, I know your schedule is busy, but I'm asking you to take some time out every month to ride along with us to make sure that your district deserves what every other district is also giving. There's also a, what's called a.
Ms. Freeman Evans, I do apologize to interrupt you, but your three minutes has expired.
That's okay. That's fine.
Thank you for being here today. We do appreciate it. Next up, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Dunn.
Yeah, let me, let me address that. When that contract came up with Romelli, I did speak with them because again, I was aware that there were some ditches that was not on there. And what happened, the city told me that the ones that was not on that contract, the city themselves will take care of that. And so that was the reason why I did not immediately respond to you because of the fact I'm waiting on their list so that they can finish. First of all, when you spray ditches, you cannot come directly into it. We were on the fiscal year, so we had to wait to do that contract in order for us to have money. Now, the fiscal year started July first. We're in July twenty-first. That's the problem. And there were some other things that we were dealing with other than District One, I mean, just the ditches. In my district, ninety-five percent of the ditches are in District One. We're aware of that. But we have been working, getting that contract together because we understand when you do ditches, you cannot go in with a lawnmower or whatever. We have to deal with somebody that have that on. Just give us a little time. It's being addressed. It may not be addressed in the time that you want. But understand, we've been saying this from day one, that we just don't have the manpower. That's why we did that fifty-some thousand dollar contract with Romelli so that the ones we can't do, Romelli will do. And that's the reason why the ones that you looked at on the contract, that's why the other ditches were not on that contract. We can't go back now and do that contract. But the ones that were not on the list that you looked at, the city is supposed to take care of that list.
Okay, I just say one thing. With that said, I also have mentioned this to the mayor sometime ago. Can't we do outsourcing? Outsourcing is an ability to be able to bring people in. Do a contract with them to come in and to maintain that, which the city right now seems like they can't do.
I don't think you quite understand. That's what the Romelli contract is. That was also, because normally the city would do that, so I don't think you quite understand. That's what the Romelli contract is, to do the ones that we were not doing. So don't think I haven't been on top of it. I am on top of it. Romelli would do so much and the city would do the rest.
So is what you all are telling me that those trees.
Ms. Freeman, I would, unless, excuse me, Councilwoman Dunn, would you, would it be okay for y'all to speak after?
No, I will be at their meeting next month. I have already agreed.
I'm sure Councilwoman Dunn will be happy to meet your meeting and speak to you after the meeting or at the future meeting, okay? Thank you for being here. Next up the podium, we have Mr. Guy Gilberti. I'm sorry, Guy, you can stand up while we have another thought.
Councilman, the only thing I want to add to that is that over the last twelve months, we have been aggressively working with the railroad to have roughly nine crossings repaired. It's taken a while, but we managed to have those nine crossings repaired all with the assistance of Council Lady Dee Dunn. I know that that wasn't mentioned, but it had been mentioned in the past, and it has taken us a long time, but we did manage to, you know, have those railroad crossings repaired. With regards to the dishes, we doing our very best. Even though it's always in the railroad right away, we have taken upon ourselves to maintain some of those dishes. We do have a contract and we're doing our very best to maintain the dishes. With regards to the trees, this is the first time I'm hearing that there are trees. If those trees are located very close to the tracks, we're going to have to be very careful about doing something there due to railroad liability issues. But we'll look, we'll look into that. And but my main point of view is that we have been working with the council office to address all these things, and we will be addressing them.
Thank you, Chief Gonzalez. Anybody else? Councilmember Wilmot.
Council President, I know you already mentioned and admonished somebody for their decorum, and it's, I want to remind everybody, when people come to speak at the podium, it's important to remain and keep calm and keep your decorum. Very important. These meetings are paid for by the taxpayers. We want to have just meetings that have an effect, that we're trying to get across these points on the agenda. And I know everybody has their three minutes. They can come up and say their peace of mind, but when they do, please keep calm and keep your decorum and refrain from using any words that are vulgar. That's very important, and no attacks. That's what we request. And then that's for these meetings to keep them civil. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilmot. Okay, let's go next to the podium. We have Mr. Guy Gilberti. Guy, thank you for coming today. You have three minutes, and we're going to start you now, okay?
Okay. The only reason why I'm here, we had, about six weeks ago, we had a dog attack in our neighborhood. The dog chased me. I was fortunate not bit. I called SPCA twice in the emergency numbers to leave a message. Was never contacted back by the SPCA. When I called Councilman LaHat's office, I spoke with his, Ms. Stephanie, and told her that it was the dog, almost attacked me, but that somebody would be bit. You know, if you didn't, something needed to be done. She said she'd contact the SPCA. The next time she contacted me, she said the SPCA was going to be contacting me. There was a young girl that was screaming in the background. And I told, informed Ms. Stephanie that the dog that was going to bite somebody just bit someone. Mr. LaHat came to the neighborhood. A police officer came to the neighborhood. The lady was taken away in an ambulance. Both Mr. LaHat and the police officer also witnessed the same dog chase down a landscaper because nobody's watching the dog. So just making mention, it's unfortunate that it took over three hours for the SPCA to get out to take care of a dog, okay? The dog has since returned. There's so much red tape that you can't find out how that actually happens. And so just want to make sure that everybody knows that if a dog, and of course, the neighbor whose child was bitten, they have retained counsel, okay? And certainly they'll go against the homeowner. But for the dog to be released, and if we have young children from age one to eighteen, somebody else is attacked by that dog, I'm just putting everybody on notice because with the taxpayers, in case they were to go after the City of Kenner or Jefferson Parish, you always go after the people with the most money. You know, my wife is afraid to walk down the street to visit a neighbor. It's just, just making mention. That's it, you know.
Guy, you can sit there for a minute. So yeah, that was fully accurate. I came out to the scene. I was out there for two hours. We did wait for Jay Paws to show up. I totally agree with you. And I've had a lot of experience with dog issues. I have two dogs myself, and I love them. They're part of the family. But that dog is a neighborhood, you know, not a nuisance, it's a neighborhood danger. And what I've tried to find out since the incident happened, there was no record on Jay Paws of a prior complaint, even though I don't think that's accurate. I've talked to Catherine Topol, our co-director. They did not have a prior complaint either. But I know from Mr. Goddard, he lives down the street, Jeremy, a good friend of mine, he says he has to walk outside with his gun sometimes. He's afraid of that dog. And I saw the dog go after the landscaper when I was there. That's why I was standing four doors down waiting for, you know, trying to make sure the police officer didn't get bit. So there needs to be more resources on animal control. Right now, it's relied upon by Jay Paws, which is Jefferson Parish Division, and it's, their area is located on the West Bank. Amy Vallon knows a lot about this, and I might have said something wrong, so I'm sure she's going to say, maybe that was all accurate. Because I've looked at this many times, and we need more resources on animal control because there were, there were only two units that day. The one showed up two hours later, and then she was so scared of the dog, she had to wait for the other unit, which took another hour. So it was three hours on a, it was a Friday afternoon that we had to make sure no one else got bit. And I do understand that family's very upset. I would be upset too. My daughter rides her bike around all of Driftwood. I told her, don't go down Trinidad. And that's freaking awful because I'm the councilman because of the dog. So I'm on top of this. The hearing is August fourth with the arraignment with Arthur Dupree, the code attorney. I've already spoken to him. I can't make anybody do anything, but I've told him how terrible this situation is. I don't want the dog back in Driftwood. Legally, it's not up to me. It's not up to him. It's up to a judge, a ruling that could be appealed across the river to Gretna. I don't want the dog back. I'm going to keep on top of it for you and the family and the whole everybody in that neighborhood, as I've spoken to. I encourage you to go to the hearing because it does show, show support when you go to hearings like that, especially with a neighborhood danger. So I encourage you to go to the hearing August fourth. If you can't be there, tell someone else to go. I'm going to try to be there, but I don't know if I'm legally, well, I think I can, I can say what I, well, I live in the neighborhood, so yeah, I can go. I'm overthinking this because I'm an attorney. So I'm going to go to, and we're going to do our best to get, to get rid of the dog. And the lady, I've asked the lady who runs the dog to call me. She never called me. So I want to hear her side of the story too, but I have heard that this is a repeated pattern, the dog getting out of that fence. So I'm here for you, and no one wants a dangerous dog in a neighborhood, okay? Thanks for coming today. I do appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Branigan.
Councilman Branigan.
On that situation, the other thing that you have to realize is that Councilman LaHat was out there. It was reported quickly, obviously, but we don't have control over Jay Paws and Jefferson Parish Humane. I had an issue yesterday where they had a dead cat in the backyard, and the lady was freaking out. And I called the Humane Department. I actually went and got the cat. It had a rake in my car, brought it to the curb, and put it on the curb where they told me they were going to come pick it up. And it, the situation was at five-thirty, the lady called me when she got home from work and said, the cat's not picked up. So I told her, I said, you know, we do not have control over when these entities show up to take care of an.
So, I told her, I said, "You know, we do not have control over when these entities show up to take care of an issue." But, you know, with Councilman LaHat being out there, it's proactive, and hopefully, that, you know, you don't want any issues, but hopefully that eases the pain a little bit.
And Stephanie did a great job that day too, and Guy Gilberti told me, my assistant Stephanie, that you were very, very responsive. She does a great job, she's here today, so I wanted to thank her for that. I think the issue also of animal control is becoming more of a salient issue with the coyotes, I think something is gonna happen at some point, so... But again, this is a parish issue, I think Kenner had a pet, something, a long time ago, which was, we don't have anymore. Does anybody know the history of that, while we're sitting here?
There was a humane department, previous administration disbanded the humane department, and then it went to a cooperative endeavor for Jay Paws to do the volunteer, which was previously canvaled.
What was the humane department, Kenner, funding and office, I mean, do we?
Code enforcement.
It was in code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
It was one officer you had, that was it? Okay, so...
And resources are stretched at this point with regard to trying to reestablish humane, it would be an amazing thing to have back, however, I'm not sure, certain that we can do that in any time period soon.
Are they reopening a shelter on the East Bank, since it was damaged from Ida, do you know?
They're working on rebuilding the East Bank shelter completely, they had some temporary locations, but the main location at this point is going to be the West Bank location on La Palco, I believe it's La Palco, correct? From what I understand, the East Bank location is going to be opening soon.
And, any idea if there's gonna be more Jay Paws officers, that's probably a Dominic Impastato question, which I'll do that as well, but...
We can also reach out to Michelle Brignac, who's the director of Jay Paws, both Catherine and myself have a good relationship with her to get more information with regard to their staffing. I think they're much in the same situation as municipalities are, is having troubles with staffing.
And Guy, I didn't respond to, by law, the dog has to be quarantined for 10 days. And I don't know either how the lady got the dog, but I think she got it within 10 days. I wasn't over there, she got it back somehow, then it showed back up at her house, so... But by law, when there is a dog bite, the dog is always quarantined for 10 days, and if there's a human bite like it is, then it has to go to a hearing. Yes, Catherine, maybe if I said the wrong thing, please correct, because I've read a lot on this.
The dog does not have to be quarantined at a facility for 10 days, if it has proper shot records and rabies, et cetera, it can be home quarantined for 10 days, depending on the capacity of the shelter at the time, because as we know, all animal shelters nationwide are always over capacity. In this case, the dog was sheltered at the Jay Paw facility in La Palco for those 10 days.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, anybody else on those issues? Next to the podium, we have Mr. Nicholas Zalva. You have three minutes, sir, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Nicholas Zalva, Kenner Firefighter Association, Vice President, 802 Dante Street. I'm here to continue to highlight the need for dedicated funding to our fire department, as well as the upcoming August 3rd, Kenner Council vote. Our firefighters are dedicated to protecting the lives and property in the city of Kenner. However, we are facing a critical issue that requires your urgent attention. The inadequate overall wages, specifically the starting pay, which is currently below a living standard, at $8.92 an hour. Although, some would say complicated, our starting pay for our firefighters is simply not enough to support their families and meet the rising costs of living. Many of them struggle to make ends meet, and it hampers their ability to provide for their loved ones. It is a necessity for many Kenner firefighters to maintain multiple jobs to make ends meet, compromising their physical and mental well-being. As a concern, Kenner citizens noted in our last meeting, terms have not yet been publicly set on a minimum dedicated compensation with regards to the potential upcoming millage. A fair and agreeable guaranteed starting pay must be implemented. This uncertainty hinders our ability to attract and retain the best and brightest firefighters to join our fire department. Our firefighters deserve to be compensated fairly for their invaluable services they provide day in and day out. It is essential to invest in their well-being and acknowledge the sacrifices they make for the safety and security of the Kenner residents. At the upcoming council meeting, we will be addressing our fellow citizens to update them on the status of these negotiations. We believe in transparency, and want to keep the community informed about the progress we make towards achieving a fair starting pay for our firefighters. In conclusion, I urge the Kenner City Council to prioritize and vote to allocate dedicated funding for the fire department to rectify the issue of poor wages, especially the starting pay, by publicizing a starting pay number to be implemented with the millage. That number needs to consider that there could be a lock for a long period of time on the figure. Consider inflation, and also consider the total compensation packages of other fire departments and firemen, firefighters alike. Not just starting pay numbers, let us come together as a community to support those who selflessly protect to ensure they can provide for their families and their communities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Next up to the podium, we have Mr. Greg Teft. Thank you for coming, Mr. Teft, you have three minutes.
Okay, Greg Teft, 3720 West Laola Drive. I've only got one thing, I really want to address it to Chief Colling, if that's okay. The videos, social media video put out by the group, that, "I'm out of town," about our police department. I'm hoping we haven't taken any drastic action against those officers that were in that video. And the reason I'm asking you that is because they were acting on what, at that time, was the policy. Regardless of what goes on, it was posted in the window, it was a policy, Jefferson Parish has the same policy. And I think the officer acted as well as he could, considering the badgering and the pushy approach that the individual was taking against him, in both cases. And I just wanted to set the record straight, because I've watched those videos three different times to make sure of what was taking place, and I don't see where the officer really had any choice, in any case, because of the way the individual was put, was trying to intimidate him, trying to coerce him, it just wasn't right. And I just want to put that on the record for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft, next up to the podium, we have Britton Allhouse. Mr. Allhouse, please state your name, fees, and your address, and you have three minutes.
Britton Allhouse, 204 Anna Street, I'm a treasurer with Kenner Firefighters Association. I just want to reiterate what past speakers and members of the public have previously stated, on how important it is for adequate funding for your fire department. Not only is it important to maintain the safety of your fire, of your fire department, to properly fund it, but it is crucial in maintaining the employees. Every year, Kenner Fire Department experiences a revolving door of great firefighters leaving our department for better funded and paying departments. In recent news, Jefferson Parish Fire has once again received a 5% pay increase, while we continue to straggle behind. The Kenner Firefighter Association represents 109 active fire employees, all which plead that pay is the biggest crisis facing our department. Although this millage increase is stated to address wages, maintenance and operations of facilities, and department vehicles and equipment, I want to highlight the salaries. We hope as a firefighter association, that the leadership of our fire department, our city, and our association can come together and facilitate a livable and reasonable wage. A livable wage that will fix the problem of the low pay, and not postpone it for the next leadership to worry about. The firefighters of the Kenner Fire Department deserve better pay, and do not deserve to be faced with the financial stressors that come with their low wages, and an already stressful job. I hope that this message is taken well, and we can accomplish the goal of providing better wages for those who save lives and protect the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allhouse, I do appreciate it. Next up to the podium, we have Mr. Brian Miller. Mr. Miller, thank you for coming, please state your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Brian Miller, 2121 Indiana Avenue, Second District. I guess I come up with more questions than actually statements. The only statement I would make is, as a citizen, Keith, you and your men and women are doing a terrific job. We have heroes out there doing it, for the disrespect that they're receiving. In regards to the firemen coming up, which, having been a policeman and having been a fireman, I think they're all heroes. Is the upcoming millage that the city wants to put on to give these men a raise, is it dedicated strictly for fire? And the reason I ask that is, being involved with the West Bank and the parish, they have millage that is voted on in, we'll say, the Seventh District of the Fire District on the West Bank. And they take millage money to pay for a parish director of fire services. And as a citizen, I vote for that millage for my firemen, I want the firemen to have it. I don't want the millage to go up, and then we can take money and pay for another part of the city. If it's fire department protection millage, let's keep it strictly for fire department protection and services, the equipment needed, the manpower, whatever it is, especially arrays. I know last meeting, the fire chief stood up here and said, even Councilman Impastato said that the city of Kenner's millage does not bring in the amount of money that even the West Bank does. Well, is he talking West Bank wide, then maybe he's right, because it brings in 21 million, West Bank wide. But if he's talking about a specific area, i.e. the Seventh District, no, it's not more. It's probably about the same. Unfortunately, the starting pay for a fireman in the Seventh District on the West Bank is about $10 to $12. So, that ought to tell you guys something, that's where he's right. You're not even getting $10 to start. So, we do need to do something for our heroes that are wearing the blue of the fire department, to make them want to stay here. My last thing, I know I'm running short on time, is, and it's only the first reading, but it created, I'm sure, like me, several people in here watch that social media stuff that goes on. The NOLA Sports Center that is looking to go into Lincoln Manor, and I know this is early, you probably won't have an answer for me, but my question is this, is NOLA Sports gonna take over Lincoln Manor where our recreation now has no use for that playground, or is it just a supplement so that the fields are being used? Because, like many of the people in here that are over 40, I can remember being in recreation, and it was, it was fun to go to school the next day and tell your friends that were from Wentwood while you was from Westgate, "Hey, we beat y'all," and so on and so forth. I don't want to take that away from our Lincoln Manor Playground and Residence. So, that's my question too, is it just to supplement maybe the use of the field, or we strictly taking away our recreation?
Thank you, Brian, your time's up, so there, really had two questions. The millage itself is dedicated.
I can, I can take both those questions, actually.
Yeah, let's roll.
I can read the language that is directly in the announcement. It's for the purpose of paying salaries and benefits for fire department personnel, for constructing, improving, equipping, maintaining, and/or operating fire department buildings and facilities, and for acquiring, maintaining, and operating fire department vehicles and equipment. That is what that millage is dedicated to. When you talk about where the money that comes from the millage gets allocated, that's where our budget process is very important. That's where you see where the money's coming from, that pays for everything. And I'll just fully disclose that this millage will not fully fund our fire department. There will still be a gap funded by the general fund. To answer question number two, regarding the NOLA Sports CEA and the incredible amount of misinformation that is on social media, I can quote Albert Einstein when he said, "Everything you read on Facebook is true." No, this is supplemental programming. The only spaces that this CEA would entail, there is an upstairs location that was completely destroyed, needs a complete renovation, that they would be using for office space in the gym. They would not have exclusive use of the gym, or the fields, or the basketball courts that we see neighborhood people playing on. What they would have exclusive use of would be the tennis courts that haven't had a net, probably in 10 years, and they would resurface it, they would build out some picnic benches and some shade next to it, that would be available for use for the public. But no, it doesn't take over Lincoln Manor Playground, which is the blatant lie that has been floating around out there. If you read the agreement, it goes through the supplemental programming. And we actually included some programming that we received a lot of public feedback about, "Why don't we have anything for teenagers?" They were willing to come in and work with our teenagers. I know there's been a lot of disruption out there, I feel like I've answered the question that was posed, but if anybody has any additional questions about that CEA, please reach out. I'll also make mention that this was a bit upsetting to the people that have worked to try to come into our community and offer additional services to our kids and our community. So, I hope it will be supported.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Yeah, at this time, I did, I will look over that contract again, and I need to do that with the constituents of the, of the Lincoln Manor Civic Association, and also the constituents in Lincoln Manor, because there was some language in there, and some things that was brought up, that I was unaware of. So, for that reason, we need to go back over that contract.
I'd also like to add that I met with Councilwoman to go over this entire agreement. May 17th, we started talking about it. The big item of contention in the community, from what I understand, is the concession stand. And we will be reaching out to her office, I spoke with her yesterday, to schedule a meeting with the partner to see if that is a deal breaker for the agreement.
Councilman Branigan.
When you were speaking, you spoke about, you know, playing at the playgrounds, at the school, and, you know, different playgrounds playing each other, I coached all of my children through Bertolino, thank God it was purple and gold, I couldn't have been anywhere else. But when you look at the CEA that is out there right now, and it is in addition to help bring children back to that facility. When you look at the enrollments that we have had, there have been 23 Lincoln Manor children sign up for athletics, the athletic programs that we offer, in the last 12 months. So, when you look at that limited number, we have to look at different ways to try and bring kids back to the playground. It's not in my district, it's up to Ms. Dunn, Councilmember Dunn, whether this thing flies or not, but I think it's a positive move for the city of Kenner's Recreation Department. And if it doesn't go at Lincoln Manor, I would hope that Ms. Newton has another plan in place to have it someplace else. Because it's something that I don't think that we should let get by.
And I wanted to add, the concept of the CEAs, during the budget meetings we had here, you know, I voiced great support for it, because it does give kids opportunities. If you want to go back and watch some of the budget meetings, I know they're long, but we talked extensively about that with Charles Alana and Natalie, and they've been doing a really good job with those, that brings kids to Kenner, and it gives them opportunities to do things that they cannot do. And the lack of participation is not limited to Kenner, I mean, Jefferson Parish playgrounds don't have as many kids anymore either, because a lot of kids play travel, they do other things, and we gotta find ways to give them opportunities, you know, on a cheap basis to allow them to participate in sports, so I'm a huge proponent of it. And the Fireman Fund Millage, there's a guy named Jason Dyer right there, who knows everything about it, he's met with me and explained to me about 10 times, so... If you want to ask him, he's sitting right there, he knows absolutely everything, because they've been working on that for a while. And, oh, yeah, he does, he just wants to leave, all right. But, thank you so much, Brian, I appreciate all your questions. Anybody else? Where'd Natalie go? Great, first time doing this, and she left. And so, all right, so number 21 says, "No more people speaking," so we have a motion to adjourn. Sound good? Done. Done.